Okay, we're beyond the appointed hour here. And I know, I think, I see Nora has her stuff here, so she's here in the green room, I think.
We have five people, five council members physically present. So are you able to see on Zoom how many folks, it looks like we have a quorum? Okay, great, we have five council members on Zoom, so why don't we proceed with roll call? Thank you, Chris.
Jimenez, going back to Jimenez, Peralles, Cohen.
Here.
Carrasco, Davis.
President.
Esparza.
Here.
Arenas, Foley.
Here.
Mahan. Jones.
Here.
Liccardo.
Here.
And Roel is here, Peralles is here.
Okay, great.
I'm also here, Tony, I just got kicked out.
Okay, so thank you, everyone. I wanted to start where we left off and ask the clerk's office, I know it was very late last night, but I assume that there is a document somewhere that describes A through G. Is that something that can be put online or put up on the?
We took notes and somebody's compiling, I think, the list at the moment. So we're putting it together right now.
Okay, we really, I think, need to have those things to be readily accessible and visible to everyone, including the public, to be able to proceed. I don't think we can proceed without that.
Does Chris have the map prepared?
We can certainly look at the map, but I think individual components are also going to be important because I would venture to guess it's not all going to be.
Yes, okay.
It's, the map is, when that was prepared, the atlas and the HTML link was sent last night around 12:45, I believe it, I don't know if it's made the website, but it's also ready with the map that where we left off last night, which includes all the changes that were discussed by the council members, except for the move of Warner Heights and Calico Creek into District Eight from District Five.
All right, so I think it would be important for us to be able to understand each of the individual components, because those will be discussed. When can we have that visible for the public and the council to be able to see? Not every single element, simply the broad strokes, which would be A, Councilmember Foley, changes to District Nine, right? Just very, very broad strokes. We don't need streets, we just need, we need to remind everybody what changed with which.
I have those notes, I can put them on a document now.
Okay, do you need a minute or two to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, why don't we allow you to do that, because I think it's important for us to be able to look at each one of those. And in the meantime, why don't we ask Chris if he could walk us through what he sees with a revised map? Was that, Chris, was that sent to us by email or to clerk's office or?
Go to me.
The revised map is available on Legistar at the moment.
I'm sorry, it's available where? Oh, on the agenda. Okay, great, thank you, council member, and thank you, Chris. So that's the 130 agenda from yesterday? Yeah, on the redistricting item, there'll be a link. Okay, so let's give everyone a chance to pull that link down, so we can look at that map, and then we'll ask Chris to describe it.
On the agenda? Which link?
And that's item 3.3.3. It says council map version 1-12721. Except there are two hyperlinks there, there's a council map version 1, HTML, is that the same map in a different format?
Yes.
Okay, that's HTML. So we're going to pull that up.
Is this in Granicus? Is that what you're referring to, David, or the web link? Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm also trying to get on Zoom as well, so I can hear from my colleagues who are remote, to see if they're having any problems getting that uploaded.
Councilmember Carrasco has her hand up.
Okay, Councilmember Carrasco, it's just about the loading and all that kind of stuff.
Oh, yeah, no, my hand is for, once that we start with the process.
Okay, understood, so we'll go there in just a moment, I just want to make sure we're all oriented first.
So where on the current map? No, we're on the, it's not showing in Granicus for me, the updated map. Can you turn on your mic? I can't hear you, David, sorry.
Tony sent a link this morning to the council that has the updated Granicus in it.
Okay, got it.
Okay, so that needs to get to our city attorney as well.
Yeah, so it's online, it's not in the Granicus that we use, that's what I meant, okay, thanks.
Okay, I've just gone to the Zoom link to try to be able to communicate with my colleagues, and it says, please wait for the host to start this meeting.
What link were you accessing that from?
I used the Zoom link that was given to me in my calendar, so that, I'm guessing is not the right Zoom link. I just want to make sure I can see my colleagues raising their hand.
I'll troubleshoot that on my end, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Liccardo, do you want me to include, to include the letters in which they were withdrawn?
Justice, if that's okay, just put it in parentheses withdrawn, if you'd like. Just, I think the most important thing is letter with a council member's name and a general description of the district or neighborhood, I think, just so that we can all track what happened. Let me just ask, are folks able to pull up the map? I'm having problems myself. So, Chris, the document, the map that you're referring to is just a PDF, it's not going to have all the data, is that right? Oh, I see, it's got, it's got the data beneath it, okay.
Yeah, and then if you scroll through, each of the districts is zoomed in with the data that's on that second page.
Okay, so this is what's called council map version one. So I confirm everyone's got that on their screen and is able to get to it.
Which one?
Cancel map version one, which reflects all the changes. Thanks, okay, great. Everybody on Zoom able to pull it all up? I wanted to propose, and I'm going to Councilmember Carrasco first, but I wanted to propose a way of proceeding here, and that is, we have a whole set of changes that have been proposed. It seems to me we could go one by one and vote each of those in or not, in the sequence in which they're proposed. Given the fact, and Chris, I'm going to ask you in just a moment first to describe the map we got at this point, because it seems as though we have what is at least a legal map at this point. So presumably, we could vote in individual changes and get there. I don't expect all these changes will be approved, and so there will need to be additional, I'm guessing there will be additional proposals after we conclude our voting on this first round. Does that seem an appropriate way to proceed? Okay, Chris, would you like to describe the map?
Sure, I think it'd be easier if I show you as I'm describing. So last night, we started along change-making changes since District Nine, and so we moved the border to basically the current lines of along Houston, and then up to Kirtner, and then over, like, and up to Harris, so that they align to the current split. I think the other thing we did is we added Canoas Garden and Farm and, you know, into District Nine, it wasn't District Six under the Cohen, under the beginning map. Then, I think I'm just going to go in a counterclockwise fashion. And then in District Nine and Two, or Ten and Two, we really redrew them to follow the current lines, at least the, this border, this north-south border line, so that they align more to the current lines. One thing that we did though, though, do is we're using 87 as the border between nine and 10, so part of Navarez that's currently in nine is now in 10. And then continuing around, I don't think we made changes to the southern portion of And then these, these lines are the same. One, one change we did make in, between seven and eight, is we moved the Adorn and Silver Creek area from seven into eight, to unify it with Dove Hill. The border then goes up King, and then there was discussion about the airport and the need to basically split the census block so that the residents near over Felt High. near Overfelt High are in District 8 where with the airport in District 7, or sorry, excuse me, District 5. We also made changes where District 7 picked up Hillview, District 8 picked up Ocala. And then moving into District 5, one change that wasn't, that was proposed but not made because of it would overpopulate District 8 by, I think, 6 or 7% was moving Warner Heights, which would cause Calico Creek, Warner Heights, and then this, all of this portion up here to move into 8 because of the overpopulation issue. Then moving north. We I think this basically made the District 3, 5 border the 101. And and one thing we did for 3, coming all the way around, is that we unified Hyde Park, Japan Town, and Civic Center. So now the 87 and 101 are the borders of along, between Districts 6 and 3. And then there was one change up here to move, I think, the shopping center into District 3 from District 4. But I think those were the major changes in the Cohen map that were discussed last night.
Okay, and if you could describe the population variance and demographics of the map we have? So we're just oriented to where we're at at this point.
So the total deviation is 9.55. So you're right below the 10% total deviation that that you're that you're allowed under current law. And I think if you look on the Atlas pages, you can see, I think, I'll just point out the areas of interest that I did last night. So you've got the 2 Asian CVAP over plus 50-plus seats in District 4 and District 8. District 4's agency about is 58.2. District 8 is 56.7. And then you have the 3 Latino influence districts. District 3 is at 36.3. District 5 is at 45.3. And District 7 is at 37.1. Those are kind of the highlights of the of the demographics, but if anyone, I can also go through additional numbers if the council would like me to.
Chris, you just referred to the majority Asian-American districts and then the influence Latino, Latina districts. There's also influence Asian-American districts as well.
Right, yeah, yes. District 1 has an Asian CVAP of 33.9. District 5, this is, has, also has an agency of up to 38.3. And then you have another in District 7 at 46.9 agency that.
Okay. All right, so at this point, I just want to understand, this is something that is, appears to be at least at first cut, a illegal legally acceptable distribution, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, I know you're not an attorney, but you're just giving sort of opinion based on what you think you see.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I'll try to avoid asking legal questions, because I know that's not fair. Okay, so my suggestion was that we would move in sequence, and do we have, Madam Clerk, do we have a list?
I just sent a very rough list to your guys' emails.
Okay, I think it would be good also be able to put that up on the screen, just so we can all look at the same time. At least make sure we agree that the list is accurate, as it's described everything. Okay. So changes A, B. So maybe if we could just refer to the letters and as we're, you know, if we're making changes and so forth, I think that'll be helpful for everyone to stay on the same page. I do have, I think, as we look at the list, we didn't formalize a request of Councilmember Arainus at the very end of the session, which was to ask Chris to look at ways to ensure the residents near the airport could stay in District 8 and the airport would stay in District 5. Do I have that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't we call that? Okay, so you're just going to add that to F? Okay.
You might just want to put split census block.
Okay. So I know that there have been, we have A through F so far. We have some that have been withdrawn. Let's just continue in letters sequence regardless of whether they're withdrawn or not. So the next letter, yeah, anyway, I don't need to tell people what the alphabet is. All right. Because I actually don't even know what the next letter. So right now, we've got essentially 6 proposals that have been considered. My suggestion is that we just go down in order. Councilmember Carrasco.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all of the work, Chris, that you've been doing. I know that this is not easy work, and it's been a long night. I just wanted to make sure, and I'm trying to look through this because I'm trying to work off of 3 different little smart screens, so it's a little difficult for me right now, to be quite honest with you. And it's not your fault. It's just me trying to coordinate all the screens. So I just want to make sure that given the historic nature of the Alum Rock Corridor, which is the oldest street in the city of San Jose, leading to the the oldest park in the state of California, that we make sure that we keep it in District 5.
Councilmember Carrasco, is this a change to your previous suggestion last night, because you did bring up Alum Rock?
I see it there. I'm sorry. And like I said, I'm not seeing everything all at once. So if we can keep it in D5, I'm good with it, but does it actually say D5? Oh, yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, anything further, Councilor Carrasco?
And the Hillview Airport, you have here that stays in D8. It's not in D8, it's in D5.
So it should read that the airport's in D5 and the population.
The airport currently, yes, we've tried explaining that yesterday. The airport itself is in D5. The people who live around the airport are in D8.
And I think one thing about the Alum, moving Alum Rock Park into District 5 is that that's.
It's already in D5.
No, I know. Well, I mean, it's not in, it's not in this in this map. One thing that your current lines do is create a non-contiguous finger that go, or popular area that goes out to take in Alum Rock and doesn't touch the Noble neighborhood. But I think, and that was permissive under the 2011 redraw, but talking to your legal counsel, I think we have to take more area and population into District 5 to allow for the Alum Rock Park to be included in District 5.
That's a good question. So let me ask you this question. I am sandwiched all around me by county unincorporated areas, county pockets. Do those county pockets serve as a bridge to those contiguous, contiguous, continuous areas?
No. So if I could just illustrate. So.
Can we see a map so that we're looking at what she's saying right now? Because we're looking at a list on the screen.
It could totally, can I trade you?
Yeah, okay, so we'll go back to the map.
Yeah. So I believe Alum Rock is, Park is here. This area. Because your current lines are like this. You can see the pink. So to move Alum Rock in, I think you'd have to come it up to Noble and just come across. And then you could accomplish that change that you requested. Let me see if I can. Yeah, you're going to have to take this one. So let me see what the change in population is between the 2. So that's a population change of 1,000 people. But District 4 currently is the most overpopulated. So it's actually making District 4 and 5 nearly identical in population. So it actually helps the total deviation of the plan.
All right, so Councilmember Carrasco, are you proposing an H?
Can you tell me what the overall population would be?
So of this change? This change.
Yeah, but, yeah, Chris, the total population?
So that, so this would move 1,000 people, 1,056 people into District, into District 5. And make your district then 3.98% overpopulated with a total population of 1,005,607. And then District 4 would come down to a 3.84% overdeviation. And its total population would be 1,005,473 people.
I just weigh in that I would object, I would object to it.
Well, we're going to come to you in just a moment. I just want to make sure we get the proposal first. We're going to go to Councilmember Cohen next. So Councilor Carrasco, I want to understand, is this what you're proposing?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor. I'm just digesting this.
Okay, while you digest, do you mind if we go to Councilmember Cohen?
No, no, please go ahead.
Okay, Councilmember Cohen?
Well, first, let me say that I, you know, whether Alum Rock Park itself is split in half or not is not a concern to me. I mean, I think, you know, it's a citywide resource and where, you know, half of it in District 4, half of it in District 5 is fine. Obviously, the legal advice was that we can't do that for contiguity. I would object to taking Noble out of District 4. I mean, Noble neighborhood, that's, you're dividing the Noble neighborhood right in half. That whole block is Noble around the Noble Elementary School, and that's this, you know, a Beriasa school that fits in with the rest of the Beriasa schools, and taking that neighborhood, there's also a neighborhood east of that up in the hill that's part of this map. There's also the the neighborhood, the little boot at the bottom that also is, you know, has things in common with District 4. So, you know, I don't want to, I would object to removing those neighborhoods. I also, I also wanted to make a more general comment that one of the things that I had been thinking as drawing maps was trying to keep districts that are underserved at lower populations, because the resources per resident then goes, the resources go further, you know, when you have fewer residents, and this would make District 5 the largest district in the city, and I don't know that I think that that's appropriate. Obviously, we're not going to be able to perfectly keep all those districts small, but right now, just generally about the overall map, 9 and 10 are the smallest. And some of the districts like 7 are the largest, and 5 on this new map we're looking at, and I don't necessarily think that that's the appropriate outcome if we're talking about where, how our resources should be spent in the city. So anyway, for those reasons, I object to the moving of people out of the Noble area into District 5.
Okay, so Councilor Carrasco, why don't we do this? Why don't you think about whether or not you want to propose this? You've heard the objection. For now, what I'd like to do is to proceed with what we've already considered and go A through F and vote, and then you can decide whether you want to propose this. Is that okay?
Yeah, if I could just ask Chris one more question. Chris, so is this a new law? Because at one point, I mean, someone drew the park into 2 districts without having this contiguous, or whatever the legal term is, contiguous, continuous type of, you know, setup. And so was this a new development, or how did we get around it at one point?
I would want, I would want to defer to Mark on this, on that question, but on the question of the 2011 draw. But one of the things under the Fair Maps Act is that all districts must be contiguous. And I think the interpretation of contiguity may have changed over the decade. Because currently, the linkage, I believe, is like what we call point contiguity. So the the line, it is not even a census block. You just attach, you split these blocks here to allow for. Sorry, so I guess if your legal counsel was okay, well, I don't know if I can do it. Yeah, so, yeah, so it, basically, I could do this to get around the Noble neighborhood and go, I guess, go that way, which would be a point contiguity touching, and I think I would defer to Mark on whether that slight connection is enough under current law.
Okay, Chris, I'm going to cut this off at this point, because now we're really talking about resources and not neighborhoods. It's about a fight over parks and parking lots and shopping centers. And we agreed that that was going to be something we would handle as a secondary matter. And we've got to focus on the neighborhoods, it seems to me. So I would like to table this and come back to it so we can at least make some progress, I think, on the primary work we've got, which is figure out where, what districts people live in. And again, I would suggest that we move forward motions based on what has been proposed. There are going to be other proposals that are going to come forward. But if we get lost in a whole lot of other proposals, we're never actually going to get anywhere closer to a map. So could I entertain, is there a motion on A?
Mayor, I'd actually like to move A through F with the exception of C.
Okay, so there's a motion from Councilmember Davis to move A through F with the exception of C.
Can we have the list back up again, please?
Yeah, we're going to put that list back up. And I'm going to ask for a second after I once had a chance to look at this list. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
And, Mayor?
Yeah, okay, I just heard a second. I heard, I think, Councilmember Arainus wanting to speak, is that right?
Yes.
Before we go there, we have a whole lot of hands up. So let me just go and see.
Oh, I apologize. Sure.
No problem. So we have a motion now, A through F, except for C. I'm going to go in the order of names that they show up on my screen here and then on the online. So first, we've got Councilmember Mayhand and then Councilmember Cohen.
Did you want to speak on this motion? Well, I was, I was going to make, I was actually going to entertain your initial motion, which was to actually take them one by one and vote on them individually, but I've already seconded Councilmember Davis's.
Okay, so we may well have to come back to that if this motion doesn't prevail.
Okay.
Councilwoman Cohen, do you want to speak on this motion?
Yeah, I mean, my comment. Uh, yeah, I mean, my comment, is about the border, the border of D six and D nine. I guess my, my, my question is, on the current alignment, we have a piece that sticks below Curtner. And I know that, that, that was done for historical purposes because of where that might have been before. But the Curtner line makes a lot of sense to me to have a straight line across. And if you look at the numbers right now, D six is 3,000 people greater than D nine. And by moving that area south of Curtner into D nine, you even out the districts better. So I just was curious as to why we would keep that piece south of Curtner and D six and not connect it with D nine.
Okay, so a question was posed. So, for now, rhetorical question, certainly you can make, you can request a friendly amendment or you can make a superseding motion, whatever you prefer. But.
Let me hear what others might say and then I'll make a friendly amendment if it comes.
Okay, alright, Councilmember, uh, then I see on the screen, I see Councilmember Carrasco first. Did you want to speak on this motion?
No, that was from before, sorry.
Okay, Councilmember Davis, you want to speak?
Yeah, I'll just, um, respond to Councilmember Cohen. So the, there has been strong, um, strong sentiment from the Willow Glen residents that they want that border to stay where it is. So that was, that was the purpose of making that determination. And we are within the, um, the plus or minus that we need to be. I can't remember what it's called. So that was, that was the reasoning for that. And I'd like to keep the boundary where it is.
Okay, Councilmember.
Sorry, I have one more comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
The reason I thought it was important for us to take all of these together is that we, we discussed this last night. Where not accepting one changes everything. So I, I would like us to get a sense of whether this is all okay with everyone. Or rather, with enough people. To just move forward with this as a map.
Okay, yeah, well, well, that's a good way to find out, is to have a vote. Councilmember Raines.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that, that I know we're, we're not supposed to be really talking about resources. But this one has, um, a huge impact to my district. And I know that in item F, it says Hillview Airport stays in D five. I think there's a clarification. The airport is directly in my district. It borders on my district and, and based on the studies that were made on lead, in the population that surrounds that neighborhood's, the south wind of that neighborhood, which is Kitty Corner, in, in, in a neighborhood called Hidden Glen, that's the second highest impacted neighborhood. And I want to make sure that once, that, that my, uh, district continue, can have a voice in the development of that land since they've been living right next door to, um, this airport. Yet the voice of D five residents will be stronger than the residents of D eight who have had the highest, lead contamination. And so I'm hoping that what we could do is maybe split the, the, the airport so that, uh, D eight residents in the future can, can, can have a voice in the development of the airport that contaminated them and their children and their, um, grandparents and such.
Okay, so am I right, Councilmember Raines, believing this was the issue you raised at the very end of the?
Well, no, the, the issue that I raised at the very end was that there was a, a, um, a technical issue for the census tract that once you, um, highlight this and, and make it part of D five, then you take some of the residents, um, from, from the Welch neighborhood into D five. Because the airport is on, on D eight side of the street. Um, and so that was the issue that was last night. And, um, I don't know, other than just making a verbal, um, correction for Chris. I don't know that he can actually do it, um, technically on, on the, on the map. And so that was an inaccurate, um, description of what I said last night. That Hillview Airport stays in D five. What that really should read is that there should be a fix on the census tract that is connected to the Hillview Airport. Um, and then aside from that, it, I'm also asking for that, uh, the census tract on the airport to be split between D eight and D five.
Excuse me, can I just interject? It would be helpful on this to pull up the map because we're all looking at the city clerk list. And if, um, somebody could pull up the map, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. We'll put the map in, and our apologies to Grace and the clerk's team. We're, we're gonna be going back and forth between these two, and I know it's always gonna be the wrong screen. But, uh, please be patient with us as we go back and forth. So we're gonna pull up the map, so everyone, look, uh, Councilmember Raines, I, I thought that we had some, I didn't hear any dissent to the notion of aligning the lines as you suggested last night. So I'm not sure if I'm missing anything. I, I thought that this was something that, that Chris was gonna work on incorporating. Is that right?
Yeah, yes, um, so I need to split the census block.
Yeah.
So, um, we can do that. I can't do that like in a live draw.
Yeah, that's fine.
We'll note it and make sure that it, it gets incorporated into the final plan.
So Councilmember Davis, is that part of your motion?
I'd like to hear from Councilmember Carrasco just to make sure she's okay with that before I accept that.
Okay.
A friendly amendment from Councilmember Raines.
Councilmember Carrasco, do you want to be heard on that?
Yeah, thank you so much. I, I, I want to be clear. So we're, we're splitting.
So we could see the map?
If, yeah, we can stop sharing, Tony, I can bring up the map. Thank you. So, I believe the airport is in right here in this white space without any streets in it. And so the motion would be to use this line here to incorporate these residential streets, including this portion here into District eight. So basically, you would split the block along this line here. So that'll include all of the airport in District eight. And actually, I think it might, the airport may, might go all the way down to Tully Road. So we might also have to split another block.
It does go all the way down to Tully.
Yeah, so then I need to, um.
And by airport in District eight, you mean the neighborhoods, the airport itself staying in D five, is that correct?
Yes, so I think.
Understood.
Sorry, I'm sorry. So basically, what happened is this line here, we'd use to split the block, all, two blocks, all the way south to Tully Road. So that, this southwestern portion that has population in a, uh, neighborhood would be in District eight. And this white portion here from this, this new line we're creating down to Tully, over to Capital Expressway and back up would be in, um, District five.
Okay, so Councilmember Carrasco, is that acceptable to you?
Yeah, that's acceptable.
Okay, so I just point out that the deviation that now says 3.7% for District five is artificially high. Because we got some neighborhoods that are actually going to District eight. Is that right, Chris?
Yeah, so, uh.
But, but they're not going to just, to District eight, they've been in District eight.
Well, that's right.
The population change would probably be something like, let me just see what these are. So we're talking about 1,200 people. So let's say we move, we move 1,000. I don't know, if we move it over, um, District five would go down to, um, 2.45% over. And I think District eight would go, um, up to, sorry. Would be at 3.5% over.
Okay.
So you're basically just swapping these numbers.
Alright, so you're talking about maybe 15 basis points, maybe 15%. Yeah, yeah, okay. So, so, uh, so that appears to be acceptable. So, uh, Councilmember Davis, is that, uh, friendly amendment?
So that's not, that's not what I heard Councilmember Raines say. I heard Councilmember Raines say that she thought the airport itself should be split between D five and D eight so that both council members had to be, basically, both council members had to be consulted about what happens with the airport. Did I get that correct, Councilmember Raines?
Uh, yeah, that's correct. I, I, I'm hoping that, that the portion that, Chris, that you're saying, which is just this little, this wedge that is, um, against the, the, um, the back of this neighborhood of overfelt high. If that, if, that would be included into the airport, correct?
Could, could we return to our earlier rule, which is we're trying to figure out where the residents go first?
That, that's fine, uh, I'll, I'll let that go.
Yeah, the, the airport, we'll, we'll, we'll table and we'll bring that back with.
No, 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 no problem.
Parks and shopping centers and other things.
The only reason that I was asking is because that area, um, that's not called Welch Park, but is still in the pink here, has, has population in it. And I was not sure whether Councilmember Raines was saying that she was proposing that to be in D five or D eight.
I thought she was proposing to put that in D eight. Councilmember Raines?
Yes. Right, well, it's, it's always been part of D eight. Yeah, a- and it's just, uh, some technical issue that when, um, that specific area is clicked on, that it takes the D eight residents. So I was trying to fix that, um, which is that, that was the part that I was talking about last night. But I, I know that the mayor has indicated we should have, uh, in terms of resources, we should have a separate discussion. So as long as that is fixed, I'm, I'm fine to move forward. And, and just make sure that those residents don't, you know, slip over to D five, which just really doesn't make sense.
Okay, so, so I think I understand correctly. If you're looking at your screen, Councilmember Raines, what Chris has done is put the, that portion in green, that should be in D eight now, is that correct? And then the other part where it says Welch Park is the part that he can split later.
Oh, my God.
Okay, so.
I'm having a hard time seeing that.
I know, I can't see any of the street names, so I can't give you any.
This is way early.
On the south part.
Can we just say the populated portion of those census tracts?
There we go.
Yeah.
That would stay in District eight. That, that is the friendly amendment.
Okay, there you go. And then, yeah, I'm, I'm willing to accept that and because it is amendable to both of those council members.
Okay, and point of clarification on the mo- motion, on the, on the friendly amendment and the motion. So, uh, we can just, because of what, uh, everybody just figured out right now, we can just go ahead and include the airport into D five just right now. Because there are neighborhoods attached to it, unlike Valley Fair and other things that we're gonna discuss. Can we just, is that part of the, the amendment and the motion so we can just move forward? We don't need to come back and revisit it? Or, I mean, this will all come, get figured out in the final, final and still come back, but.
I, I, I am happy to have the public discussion about where resources go that are not populated. I, I'd just rather not do it now because I think we're, we're gonna get down rabbit holes.
Okay, and is that the understanding of the two council members in that area? I just want to be, I just want clarity, that's all.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have lots of time to get clarity on those issues. I, I guarantee you. I just want to make sure we can get to the population, which is the hard part. Okay, so, uh, we're gonna go next to Councilmember Jimenez.
Can we make sure that's okay with the second or first, Mayor?
The second or was it, Councilmember Mayhand?
Yes, that's fine with me.
Thank you for clarifying, Councilmember Davis. Alright, Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you. If we can put up the, uh, the, the, the list of items, and, and obviously, I'm gonna be speaking towards, uh, about the discussion we had briefly yesterday between, uh, Councilmember Mayhand and I, uh, on the boundaries. You know, one of the things that's striking to me is, is we go through and have these conversations in these different districts is that it seems to me that we're mainly talking about deviation and things of that nature. But one of the things that concerns me is just the impact, uh, on whether keeping, retaining the lines that exist or modifying them and the impact on, uh, voters of color, Latinos, Asians, blacks. And so, um, I'm, I'm really unclear as to how retaining the lines or, or what we did in District two and District 10, really, uh, how, how that impacts that. And so, uh, i- i- in having this, uh, long period of time to digest sort of what we talked about yesterday, I, I, I think I am not going to be supportive of the changes that we agreed to. I also do think that, in thinking about it a little further, that, um, the, the Santa Teresa foothills, I think, are more, uh, consistent and similar to District 10 as opposed to the northern part that we, we talked about, uh, uh, which I think borders 87 and Capital Expressway. I think it, it is. And so, uh, I'm not gonna be supportive of that, so I'm not gonna be voting for the motion. But I just wanted to express that, uh, that is, as I take more time to digest this, uh, I, I, I think that, uh, I really need to rethink it. And so, uh, I, I'd be supportive of moving forward with the area of District two and District 10 as it was proposed in the Cohen map. So I'm not gonna be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Okay. I, I am inclined to support this, but I think, I know that there's been a lot of changes here. But as I've been tracking it, I think it continues to comply, uh, with, will understand to be the legal requirements of the law. So I'm, I'm likely to support. Uh, Councilmember Foley?
Thank you. I, I'd actually like to hear from Councilmember Jimenez, if I could, as to your concerns with the, the current map. You, you said in general, but is there something specific as far as a change? I, I'm, I mean, as far as my map is concerned, I'm, I'm fine, except that I am, uh, D nine is lower representation than, than many of the other districts, D nine and D 10. I don't know how to grow D nine without affecting D, D 10 without affecting D seven or D six. So, uh, I'm, I'm open to suggestions on how to increase population, but I'm not sure where to, where that would come from. So, um, other than that, I, I, I think I'm inclined to go ahead with the motion. But I would like to hear from you, Councilmember Jimenez, uh, because, uh, your, your opinion's important.
Okay, Councilmember Foley, are you, are you, I'm just trying to read into your question. Are you thinking that if we retain, well, if we go back to the Cohen map, that it would then have to change things as it relates to the border of D 10 and D nine? Is that?
No, I'm actually, uh, um, no, I would, uh, accept my map as it is. Although, uh, I do have, and I am, uh, underrepresented in the overall scope of our population. I'm just mindful of your, your objection.
Yeah.
And wondering how we might be able to overcome your objection.
Yeah, well, well, I would say the, the first thing is that it's sort of rooted in, you know, th- these changes are coming out very quickly as, as I think we could all agree on. And I haven't had a chance to, to sort of digest this in a deeper way. I, I will be doing so by Tuesday, obviously, and I know this isn't the final vote on things. But I would hate, I, I'm not interested in supporting something that I'm completely unsure about, I guess, is my point. And so, um, the map, as it was drawn in the Cohen map, uh, which I was supportive of, and I seconded that substitute motion, that, uh, extended, um, the District 10 southern part up against the foothills. You know, so it took away the Santa Teresa foothills area, and, and that area already is split between District two and 10. It's, it's referred to as Santa Teresa Foothills Neighborhood Association. So traditionally, and what has happened over the course of many years, is the District 10 council member and the District two council member both go to those meetings. And so it seems very natural to me that, uh, and I stated this yesterday, that, that it would, you know, I have no issue with that. And, and so thinking about that as it relates to, in, in, in comparison to the northern part of District 10, which I think aligns more with, uh, the population and the type of folks that we have in District two along some of the main corridors, such as Blossom Hill, such as Monterey Road, such as 101, such as 85. Well, maybe not 85 because we're gonna be taking that out. But I, I just think there's more, uh, similarity in the type of folks that are up there in the northern part. And that's why I think that reverting back to the Cohen map would be, it seems to me, based on what I've heard already, and my opinion may change by Tuesday. But it seems to me to, to, to be a more appropriate. And, and I do appreciate, uh, Councilmember Mayhand's comments yesterday about already working on some projects such as stop signs and things of that nature with, uh, with, with the folks in the northern part of District 10, which would via the Cohen map become District two. You know, I, I have confidence in my staff that we can carry forward any of those things. You know, I I have confidence in my staff that we can carry forward any of those things that are being done there. And and, you know, I I just think it's it's likely a better fit. And again, I need to analyze the numbers a little bit more, but it's been expressed to me via some messages that I've gotten via email that keeping the lines as is at what's in front of us at the current moment dilutes some of the Latino votes and and some of the sort of the black votes and things of that nature. So that that is of concern to me, and and I'm going to dig into that a little deeper, but that's the reason I'm not ready to to accept this. And and I'd rather refer to the Cohen map as it relates to the District two District ten border. So not suggesting that I'm not supportive of some of this other stuff. It's just that portion I I'd like to move forward with going now.
Yeah.
Right. Could it? Could I suggest we ask Chris to weigh in about whether there is? I I I heard concerns about dilution. Is that right, Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, that that's those are some of the concerns that have been expressed to me.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Foley, I cut you off. My apologies.
No, I was. Thank you. I was just going to say that I I appreciate that input. Councilmember Jimenez, you know, it is hard to know what we did last night and see how that plays out today. It was a long night and it was an early morning. So living with the maps for a little bit is helpful. So I I just appreciate your your perspective. And Mayor, thank you for allowing us to go back and forth a little bit on that discussion. Other than that, I'd still like to advocate for my mobile home parks on Arvillas, which is but I don't want it to impact negatively D ten because it does. It's seven hundred and sixty residents in those two mobile home parks. They're senior mobile home parks, so it it it's and typically low income, so that adds to my demographics a little bit. But I'm I'm okay not including it because I don't want to break up D ten any anymore. Because D ten and D nine both are among the lowest population of the of the districts.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. Councilman Mayhahn, I saw you raised your hand again. Did you want to speak?
Well, I just wanted to briefly chime in on the the north, south, east, west divide. I I personally, and I I think it is we do need to look at population deviation and the demographics. I I don't disagree with that at all. I just I think there's a reason that the commission's map that passed, I think, eleven to one preserved that existing north, south orientation. And I mentioned last night school district boundaries and transportation lines were working with multiple neighborhoods along the VTA light rail line. I I I get that you you could certainly argue you could argue the the Snell Road north, south, or the eighty five east, west, I understood, but I have not heard a specific or compelling reason to suddenly swap thirty thousand residents between D ten and D two. Whereas I think there are compelling reasons based on what I know of the community. In fact, I I don't live in the southern half of District ten. I actually live in the northern half of District ten. And I know that community, and I know people shop at the Oak Ridge Mall down in D ten and the Blossom Hill Road corridor. They the the light rail line runs north, south. Monterey Road runs north, south, as does Snell. Snell is a major natural dividing line. Those neighborhoods are clustered around Marshall Cottle, which now has a couple of connection points under eighty five, and those neighborhoods work together on issues relating there. So I think there are plenty of reasons to keep the lines where we have them, as the commission map did. And if there's a specific community of interest that we think is on the wrong side of the district boundary, I'm very open to having that conversation and understanding whose needs aren't being met or what needs to shift. But I just I'm I'm kind of bulking at the idea of of completely swapping these two big sections of our district without a compelling reason. And again, I I think there's that there is a reason that the commission map left it as is overwhelmingly. So I would not support reverting back. I I like the map and would support the current motion on the floor.
Okay, maybe if I could just offer, Chris, I I don't expect you to work all these numbers in real time, but at least a concern has been raised about racial dilution. And if the two alternatives around D two and D ten could be compared and offered to us and be able to have a clear discussion of that by next week, I think that would be helpful, just to have transparency to make sure we're not doing anything that would not comport with the law.
And and Mayor, when you talk about the two alternatives, sorry, this is Sergio, but you're you're talking about the Cohen map and what's currently on the table?
I I think that would be it.
Yeah, that's fine with me. I mean, I I I feel confident that once that's looked at in more detail, I think a good case can be made as to why to to go with the Cohen map. But yeah, that's fine with me.
Chris, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, so so the to basically compare the 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 Cohen map as originally presented to the this version, whatever version one of the council map that's decided and look at voter dilution. I think I would also, of course, work with Mark on this and and his with it through his guidance, because I think, of course, he is your legal counsel.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so we can work, I can work on the demographics and and he can work through the the legal aspects of it.
Okay, I appreciate that. So we may.
Okay with Mark. Sorry, I should I see he's on. So I just want to make sure that makes sense.
That's fine with me, but Nora, Nora is the city attorney, so.
Nora, I'm sorry, Mark.
I I think Nora was nodding her head, so I think we're good.
And Mayor, can I can I can I just? One one thing that I think I think is important and what I would like to see is I know that in closed session, we've had discussions about redistricting and specifically, I think Nora brought in this professor that sort of educated us and 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 sort of, you know, made some clear points as to where these maps are and how he views them and such. Is it possible to get him to be present during Tuesday's meeting? So that way we can ask some of these questions as well? I think that would be helpful.
Councilmember, we can check on that. He was retained as a as a litigation consultant. And so let it let us find out his availability. He's not always readily available. And let us gauge whether or not that makes sense. But we definitely will be consulting with him also and and will share any legal information that we receive with the council. The in if it's relates to litigation risks, that'll be handled one way. And if it's public information, that can be handled another way.
Okay. So we'll we'll certainly get all the data back next week and have a clear idea of the impact. Need to say why I'm willing to support going forward as we are until we know more, which is I think Councilmember Mayhahn has articulated very strong reasons to keep communities of interest drawn along school district lines and neighborhoods have been traditionally working with each other for many years in the same district and keeping those lines essentially intact. My understanding is what is of concern is where obviously race is a primary motive motivation or in decision making, which I I really don't believe is the case here. And, you know, the the line looks like a straight line, more or less, that runs north, south here to me. So it certainly has a lot of intuitive sense. So I think what we have is a motion. I'd like to vote at this time unless there's any questions about the motion that's on the floor or any clarification. So a lot of people have their hands up from before. So if I could just ask everybody, put your hands down unless you want to ask a question or or a clarification about this motion. Okay, I'll go first in the room here. Councilmember Sparza.
So the motion includes what Councilmember Jimenez, the the compromise, which both are coming back, correct?
No, my understanding is we've got a map, but we're going to have the analysis done on the comparison between the two. Because what's going forward is what is is on the screen.
Was that? Okay, Councilmember Jimenez, was that your understanding? I'm sorry, I just.
Well, I I well, I I I wasn't supportive of the changes. I think in here it says that the changes in effect, that's the map that we're moving forward. I don't support that. I I think before that's even considered, I'd like to see some of this information and really dig into this a little deeper. So I I'd appreciate if it's just left out, quite frankly. And I'm not sure how that impacts the drawing of the lines, but.
Yeah, I guess what I would say is this. Typically, we have a commission that produces a single map that a council then can approve or not. We don't do ourselves any favors when we move forward with multiple maps, just like the commission didn't do us any favors by moving forward with three maps, even though they preferred obviously their own. I think it's important for us to get to a map. And if we learn that there are issues with it through a transparent process and we discuss the data, then I think we pivot and change direction. But I I'm not willing to move forward with two maps. I think we need to move forward with one map and learn what we learn and have that public discussion. Councilmember Sparza?
That's it. I'll put my hand down.
Councilman Cohen?
Yeah, you're making a slightly different argument than I than I think I would make about two separate maps and having to pick a map. I mean, I think what what I my my preference would be to bifurcate this question and leave out the two ten from the first vote and approve the rest of the changes that were in that motion. The two ten question is not just about whether or not there are issues legally, but also potentially whether there are arguments to be made for communities of interest in different definitions of community interest from different viewpoints. There's a reason why I had left, you know, created that boundary in the map in the first place because of my understanding from people about their desires for some things to change in terms of the communities of interest at the two ten boundary. I'm not, you know, I'm just one voice, but I'm I'm not the whole council. This is also based on conversations with Councilmember Jimenez, and he's now articulating that view, which is a different view about what communities of interest belong together. And, you know, both views could are valid views, but my my thought is that this doesn't really affect our map process to say, let's come back with the data, look at the numbers next week and pick one of the two map alignments that will then plug into the remainder of the map. It's not like we're saying we're going to approve multiple maps today. So I I would like to bifurcate the motion, and I won't support the main motion if it's not bifurcated.
Not a substitute?
Okay, I'll make a substitute motion. Well, I I guess the substitute motion would be, I mean, I'm asking to make a motion to bifurcate the motion. I think that's.
But do you want to ask Councilmember Davis? Or do you you want to go ahead and make a substitute? What would you prefer to do?
If she's saying no, then I'll make the substitute, but I'm not I wasn't. I haven't heard that from her, so.
Okay, do you want to ask her first, or do you want to just make a substitute? It's your choice.
I we've got to, I think out of courtesy, I'll ask her about her motion and whether she would need to bifurcate it before I make a substitute motion.
Councilmember Davis?
Not interested in bifurcating the motion.
Okay, I'll make a substitute motion then to approve the items other than two and ten and to come back, do an analysis, come back with the analysis next week of the two different alignments for two and ten, and we'll make the take a vote on two ten next week.
I I have a question. I'm willing to second that, but I just have a question. So if if we so we're essentially defying the decision on E, but we will look at both maps at the next council meeting, correct? So the can the consultant will redistricting partners will do the work on both maps? And they both come back to us next meeting? Is that correct?
Right, and we still have to make a final decision next week.
Right.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, so there's a motion of Councilman Cohen seconded from Councilmember Sparza. Now, I want to tell everybody who's on the Zoom screen, I've got four hands up. Do all four people want to speak on this issue? Okay, Councilmember Carrasco?
Yes, Mayor, I just have a question. And I don't know if this is going to be a friendly amendment or not. So it's going to start off as a question. Please be patient with me. Because there's a you made a comment, Councilmember Cohen, which I wholeheartedly agree. When you look at those districts that are of high need, and of course, we know where they kind of land, and and of course, seven and five are are amongst the the most challenged, in my opinion. Every district has its own challenges, but we know what five and seven face on the daily. And so so I it's just a question, Mayor, please don't don't cut me off. So I had asked for Las Plumas to be drawn into District five yesterday because it made sense to me because it was east of one oh one. But that was with the understanding or with the hope and a prayer that we could get Warner Heights back into District eight from some of the comments that I've heard from some of the neighbors that they felt that they they were more aligned with the communities there. But since that's not happening, I'm at about a hundred and four, a hundred and five thousand, which for a community of high needs and many, many challenges poses a great deal of of, you know, challenges for my team. So I don't know if this would come in as a friendly amendment to put Las Plumas area back into D three instead of going back and redrawing the maps.
I'll accept I'll I'll accept that. I'll have to look at the number effect, but I'll accept that.
Okay, let's be really clear about the area because it's not just Las Plumas, it's Little Portugal and all that. So I want to understand.
It's not Little Portugal, it's Las Plumas. It's it's all over there by.
Let's get the map back up on the screen so we're super clear about what's moving, because we know there were, I think, three separate.
And that part of Little Portugal, Mayor, is called Gateway East.
I I understand, but what appeared on the on the on the map?
Right here, Las Plumas.
Right, right. So so what you see is Las Plumas is one census tract. There are other census tracts that were also moved.
It would be up to here, right? You go from one oh one down to McKee Road. And then over to this road. Is that Las Plumas or? Actually, I think this part is not. I think that's checkers.
So Councilor Carrasco, is this the area?
That's it.
So this would 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 greatly equalize these these two districts together. District three would go would move to a a positive deviation of point four two percent, and District five would move to a negative one point four three percent. So District three would be have around a hundred and two thousand people, and District five would just have over a hundred.
Okay, so that that's the proposed change, right, Councilmember Carrasco?
Thank you.
We're we're gonna I think we should. Okay, that's part of D.
I'm okay with that.
And we're checking Councilmember Cohen, he's nodding his head, saying it's acceptable to him. Councilmember Sparza is saying it's acceptable to her as part of the substitute motion.
Should probably ask D three, though.
And we're going to go to D three. Councilmember Peralos, do you have any concerns about that?
I don't have any concerns about that, but I I have recently heard concerns from residents of Little Portugal that are, you know, obviously, they have a natural dividing line, which is two eighty. And previously, or is that the current existing map that that we're working under, right? I don't know the best way to say without being confusing, but the map we've had for the last ten years has Portugal, Little Portugal combined all into District three. I I don't necessarily think it's, you know, it's the 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 biggest issue to then have that split at the two eighty because it is a natural split. And and there already is a natural split amongst the the two sides of two eighty, I would say, of the Little Portugal neighborhood. But I think that's just been one thing that's raised. I don't know what that would do to the to the to the population as well. And I'd like to get Councilmember Carrasco's feedback on that. I'm I'm fine with this proposed change right now, but I I'm I'm sort of passing it back that there's the neighborhood next door. And I wanted to hear your feedback on that, Councilmember Carrasco.
Yeah, I I know. I there's there's a lot of comments going back and forth. I will tell you that it it is not what it was ten years ago. And if you just drive down that little strip, it's a it's a very mixed businesses. It doesn't look like it does west of two eighty. It's very different. And so I I would retain Gateway East. Or 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 as it shows on the map, Little Portugal.
Right. So Councilor Carrasco, you're not in favor of restoring the original line?
No.
Is that correct? Okay. Councilmember Peralos, do you want to say anything more about this change before we go to Councilmember Arenas as her hand up?
About this change? No, that that's fine. Then I can you leave my hand up, but wherever I was.
We'll come back to you. We'll come back to you in a moment. We're going to go to Councilmember Arenas.
Thank you, Mayor. So I I have another ish I have an issue with with some of the D six changes that were made, and I think they're deliberate. Deliberately moving Latino and Black residents who are currently in D six. Deliberately moving Latino and Black residents who are currently in D six, and I don't know if that maybe it was inadvertently happening. And I I don't want to see the a reduction in political power or separation from other Latino and Black and Brown communities, and that's the Canoas Gardens and Farmer Rubino in particular. And so it to me, and you know, this is for the legal experts, but this seems a bit of a cracking of that community. And so I wonder if we could also move this question over in terms of this D six boundary with the D two, D ten side of of things.
Are you are you proposing an amendment, Councilor Arenas?
Well, yes, I'm proposing an amendment. Councilmember Cohen, would you be amenable to also including, I know that you had also some, there are also some concerns, including yourself, because in your original map, this is not what the boundary looked like. I think in your original map, this it was it was something that I could live with. And so I I'm hoping that you can include some of the these issues about the D six boundary into that question about the do the D two, D ten boundaries as well.
Is that you mean having a look at the racial demographics of the changes? Is that right?
Right.
Okay, so you're looking for an analysis of the racial demographics of this change. Are you proposing any change in the boundary?
No, I'm not proposing any change in the boundary for now. I think that we, this is my impression of what that looks like, that I I know those you know, this is from what I know, but I want to make sure that it's not just what I think I know, but that it's actually an analysis.
Okay, so friendly amendment is a request for analysis of that change as well.
Just just one note. So the this green line here is the original Cohen map. It's split Canoas Garden and Farm and Rubio kind of maybe sixty forty between District Six and District Nine.
Okay, Councilmember Cohen, you okay with that friendly amendment?
Yeah, the amendment would just would be just to study that and then next week, I mean, bring that back so we can see what those numbers. You're talking about the difference between the the green line and the black line, I guess.
Yeah, does that black line represent the the current?
This is the version one. This is the new one, the map that we're discussing right now.
The proposed line, yes.
Proposed, thank you.
Right.
Mayor, may I get a point of clarification? What was the friendly amendment?
It was to seek analysis of the change of demographics between the proposed line, which is the black line, and the green line, which was the original Cohen map.
Between D nine and D six? Okay.
Yep.
And and to come back with that next week, is that?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, so Councilor Cohen, is that acceptable?
Yeah, it's an analysis, just to be clear, we're it we're still we'd still be voting on the current to to make the current one map, but bringing the analysis back.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Sparza, assume it's acceptable?
Yes, it's the analysis, correct? Just, okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Councilmember Peralas?
Yeah, thank you. Along some of the lines, I think, of the conversations we're having right now, and Councilmember Jimenez sparked it for me. And I think we've been sort of discussing it in regards to dilution, which we have legal requirements, right, to 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 follow. And I think we're, as we're looking at the maps, we're likely following all those. But I think we also have considerations to take, and we've heard that as well. And it's not just about, I would say, diluting potential minority voices. I think it's about enhancing them as well, right? And that's the other side of of the dilution, and I think that's the other side of what I heard from Councilmember Jimenez was is there a map that is also legal? But might it enhance some of the the traditionally underheard voices and underrepresented voices? And so that's where, you know, I think I I don't want to land just because something is legal, but it may not be what's better. And so if we can find something else that is also legal and keeps communities of concern together, you know, uses some natural boundaries, I appreciated that the sort of the 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 north-south version of Cohen's map was also using natural boundaries of of the freeway there. Similar to the discussion I just had with Councilmember Carrasco, I I understand that that, you know, using that natural boundary of the two eighty, you know, between a neighborhood that's already split, and, you know, maybe there's an interest to try to keep together, but maybe there's also an interest not to, and neither one may be illegal, but there there is is maybe a benefit from one over the other. And so that's where I think I I'm I am more interested, and I appreciate where the motion is going now, because I think it gives us an opportunity to take a look at that before we simply just land on a map. And and I'm not accusing anybody of right of 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 any, you know, I think, misdoing. It's it's a matter of, let's actually look at some of this data. And if there's a way to enhance some traditionally underrepresented minority voices, and it's, you know, it's completely legal and doable, and and it's a way that keeps populations together. You know, I I in my mind, that's where I would like to land, and I think we may have an opportunity to do that with just some some a few changes, as it sounds like now. So I think with the the current motion and the two amendments, I I can can support that direction going forward. And then I'll raise my hand later because Councilmember Sparza and I have a a non-population line that we'd like to discuss between our districts. Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Foley, I believe you have your hand up. Was that from before?
Yes, it was. I just took it down. Sorry about that.
Okay. All right, we have a substitute motion from Councilmember Cohen, which is to incorporate all these changes except for E from Councilmember Mayhand, and that will look at the two options next week. Is that correct? Okay, and I know it's been amended and tweaked a little bit along the way, but that's the motion. Let's I'll support that motion. And hopefully, we can get closer to resolution. Let's vote.
Jimenez?
No.
Peralas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
No.
Sparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Mayhand?
No.
Jones?
Aye.
Ricardo?
Aye.
And what's the tally? I'm sorry, I I went to law school because I failed math. I'm sorry?
What was the vote?
Eight eight to three to pass.
Yes.
Okay, so that that prevailed by vote eight to three. I'm sorry, I wasn't tracking. Okay. Now, we can consider other motions with regard to what we've just discussed, or we can start to talk about assets and resources like airports and shopping centers. So I guess I would encourage us to try to move to the latter so we can get those issues kind of knocked out. And then we can come back on Tuesday. Councilor Peralas, you have your hand up.
Yeah, mine is the latter around a non-population move, so I'm 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 happy to wait if
Yep, let's let's go there now.
Okay. So this is about San Jose State's South Campus. And if I'll wait until maybe we can get the map up to oh, I don't, well, I guess if you want to take notes, go for it or look at the map. Either way, it's a it's a slightly nuanced, it's kind of like Councilmember Arenas's discussion around the airport. Because I think you're going to have to draw in a a line, if you will. So if you can zoom in a little bit north of that, yeah, just just right, a little lower right there, yeah, and that that bottom corner, the bottom right corner. That one, that one right there.
Got it.
So those three blocks there on the bottom.
Where it says Spartan Keys and Woolbury.
Yep, yep.
This year?
Those button, no, not all of that, just the, no, 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 in in my district. Those bottom three cubes down there.
Yeah.
Those three are all San Jose State, and it doesn't include really any resident. But when you when you click to include them, you can go ahead and do it if you want to include those three.
Well, these are, these are already in your district.
No, I know, I'm talking about moving them to District Seven.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry.
Okay, so this is, we'll call this Spartan South Campus.
This is South Campus, correct?
Yeah.
And and Grace, I sent you a photo. That might be helpful for folks to see it after this, too. Thank you.
So you you see that first one that you did, that little that little appendage up at the top?
Yeah, right here.
That little appendage actually does have some residents, and I'd like to keep those residents. And it it's not San Jose State, so I don't know why the map kind of draws it that way, but essentially, if you if you went straight across that same line that, yeah, that one,
Cut it here.
Then you would basically only incorporate, you know, the the South Campus, which really has no population and and you know, and and so I don't know if you can do that, but that that would be my my
So it would
Interesting.
Drawn drawing the line at, what's the street? At Humboldt?
Yeah, if if Humboldt were to were to pass through, yeah.
Okay. It looks like there are seventeen people in these blocks. And then this block has three hundred and fifteen. So it's probably right here.
Yeah, there's there's an apartment complex up at the top corner there.
Okay.
And and I don't know if 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 you can even be more specific and creative, my guess is those seventeen people all live along Humboldt, and when you they probably live on the south end of Humboldt. I don't know if you can draw them out and and keep them in D three and only do, you know, the the Spartan Campus. That would resolve a hundred percent of the the residential issues, so.
I I will see what I can do. It might, we might be able to do it based on parcels instead of census blocks, but for for an electoral line. But let me work with your GIS department, which is fantastic, and figure out best the best way to encapsulate moving the South Campus below Humboldt into District Seven.
Yeah, so that that'll be the, Mayor, that'll be the 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 request then is to to retain all the the actual physical neighbors or residents in District Three and just move the the campus.
Okay, I think we're clear now. We're going to call this J Peralas South Campus. Councilmember Sparza, is that okay with you?
Yep, it is.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is get these out on the floor, and then hopefully, we're going to have just a global motion and sweep all these changes in.
And also, I Grace has a photo that might help them draw and see like a Google Earth photo to see, we just don't want to make sure the residents stay whole in D three.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so I think we're all clear on the outcome. Next, I'd just like to go to the Hillview Airport, since that obviously was a great concern. And ask either Councilmember Arenas or Councilmember Carrasco to tell us what they'd like us to do with the airport.
Sure, since I'm the one who brought this up, I know that there's a technical change that we needed to make for the population that's connected to the airport with the census tract. But aside from that, I think I've already expressed my desire to have District Eight voices heard on the development of this airport. They're the ones who have, you know, one of the populations that have high lead contamination in their children and their different generations of their families. And also Kitty Corner from that, which is hidden Glenn behind the Safeway, which is down South Wind. Is what the study that was shared with us from the county earlier this year also shows that that population is is one of the populations that is also impacted the greatest because that's where the wind carries the lead when there's takeoff and landings. And so, you know, I I just want to be able to have to have, obviously, it won't be during my term. It'll be during a future term, but I'm looking for the best interest of these Welsh residents to have a voice in the development that has contaminated their lives and their well-being to something that they would like to live next to. And so whatever that looks like, if it's just a portion of it, it doesn't have to go half. Whatever portion that's closest to District Eight along the border of where the populations are, if we could establish a boundary, then that would be that would be great so that those residents can also have a voice.
Okay, Councilor Carrasco, you you have your hand up. What I'm really trying to do is to land this plane, pardon the pun. Just tell us where the line should be on the airport or where the where the airport should go.
Yeah, and and I'm perfectly fine with that, Mayor, but if I could just, if I could also just add to this conversation. The the study that Councilmember Arenas, we're all familiar with that study. I hope everybody remembers it. True, there were some areas of the district of the neighboring districts that were impacted more than others. But of course, my district is all the way around that area, and I also have had the neighborhoods where the planes have actually fallen right on top of people's homes. And so we want to make sure that those neighborhoods stay safe, and that's why I I strongly hope and advocate for the residents of District Five. At the end of the day, you know, the the hope is that District Five and District Eight will continue to work together and be cooperative. We don't know who will take this seat in the next twelve months, or who will take D eight in the next thirty-six months from now. But it's always been in District Five, and and I just want to make sure that we have the voices of of the people that are most marginalized. And so I don't want to get into the politics of things or into the socioeconomics of the district as a whole, or who's been in this office or that office or what have you. But I mean, I'm okay if 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 dividing the the airport to some extent gives District Eight peace of mind. There's a lot of ways of being able to contribute to the conversation and to the development. There's, of course, the VTA opportunities, and there's also the subcommittees as well. But I think that there's going to be a lot of opportunities for the surrounding council members, D seven, D five, D eight, to contribute in in the next ten years as this this plan truly develops and unfolds. I do think, however, that the airports should remain in District Five.
I I think that doesn't change anything, right? The airport stays in District Five, then we don't need to change anything. So let's let's move on to the next non-residential resource. So any other shopping centers, parks, airports, anything else that folks want to raise? I'm going here in the room first. Councilmember Cohen?
There's just a small thing that Toyon Elementary School, which is right on the border of D four and D five, is currently in D four. It's just drawn around the school. It's the only of the thirteen Berriessa schools that wouldn't be in D four on this map. It's right along Penitentiary Creek Road, and I just would like to draw a line around Toyon School to keep it with the other schools in Berriessa as part of D four.
Okay, so Toyon Elementary going to D four. We're going to call that K, letter K. Councilmember Cohen, Toyon Elementary to D four. All right, Vice Mayor Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. With all the impactful discussions and issues that we've been addressing in terms of the boundaries, I'm actually kind of embarrassed that my biggest issue is whether the Cheesecake Factory moves into my district or not.
It's a pretty good restaurant.
Yeah, well, actually, it turns out it's on the Santa Clara side of the
Well, we can't do that, can we?
So so that being said, and I also heard from Councilmember Davis's adamant position and passion about retaining Valley Fair in District Six. I I like to take that off the table, and I look forward to working with Councilmember Davis on on the Urban Village. Again, I think that splitting an urban village like that is probably not the best course of action, but I know that the Councilmember Davis and I can can really move this this process forward and and benefit our community. So I'm going to withdraw my proposal for Valley Fair.
Okay, Vice Mayor Jones is diplomatically withdrawn. Okay, Vice Mayor Jones is diplomatically withdrawn. See? So right now, the motion is just J., Councilmember Perala, and K., Councilmember Cohen. Are there other non-residential resources that we should discuss before having a motion? And I'm seeing Grace lean in. Did you want to tell us something?
I just wanted to clarify that the Hillview Airport then was passed in the previous motion, even though it was a non-population.
No, we were only, I think, well, it was part of the motion was only the residential portions.
Only the.
Yeah, because we were just talking about where people go. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand. It's your last chance to try to get Levi Stadium out of Santa Clara, for example. Okay, then let's entertain a motion. We have J. Peralas and K. Cohen on the table. Anyone like a move? Move approval?
Second.
All right, motion, Councilmember Sparza, second Councilmember Cohen. Let's vote on that motion.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Peralas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Hi.
Carrasco?
Hi.
Davis?
Yes.
Sparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
No.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Ricardo?
Aye.
Ten to one.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can I have clarification on Cohen's change to the map, please?
Yes. There was a.
You're asking for specific location of Toyon? Is that the issue?
Yeah, just clarification on the, the change.
Okay, so I guess you zoom in on the map, though. I think he's just done it there on the map. Yeah, it's just that, that rectangle, that little square there that's.
It's zero population.
Yeah, it's, it's just a school.
Yeah. So just south of Penitentiary Creek.
You got it, okay.
Okay. I'd like to raise one more concern as we're thinking about analysis that comes back to us on Tuesday. When I had conversations with our council, with, with Nora a week or two ago, we talked about what legal vulnerabilities there may be. We have not been, I think, legally vulnerable in the past, but there's have been demographic shifts in our city. And among those very significant demographic shifts is that we are a much higher percentage of Asian American community than we have been in the past. And I believe the number is somewhere around thirty-eight percent. I, I may have off by one percent or so. Chris, is that right? Chris, you're muted right now.
I think that's correct. Let me just double check.
Okay. So my concern is I'm looking at the cumulative effects of various changes that have been made from the map that currently governs council districts and what have been proposed by the commission. As I understand it, Chris, we have two Asian American majority districts. That is District Four and District Eight, is that right?
Yes.
And then we have several, what we call districts of influence, but the, the largest of those is District Seven, which has nearly half of the population is Asian American. I think you just said it was forty-eight percent, is that right?
District Seven is forty-six point nine.
Forty-six point.
I mean, in, in the, in the, the council version one map.
Okay, and the one we just approved.
Correct.
Yeah, so my concern is it was actually higher than that before. And by, here's what I mean by that. You move from where the commission map was to what Councilmember Cohen, Cohen's map, we moved Dove Hill out of District Seven. Dove Hill, that area, I'm, I'm just getting these numbers in, sixty-eight percent Asian American. Then through council amendment, A-borne was moved out of District Seven. That's sixty-one percent Asian American. And we're concerned about dilution, Hillview was moved into District Seven. That's eighty percent non-Asian American. All those have the impact of reducing the Asian American population, and this is all just coming to me, by two point seven percent in District Seven. So I would like to have an analysis of those demographic changes to District Seven, since it is one of the three districts that appear to be most significantly Asian American. And the particular concern, and I know this is a concern that has been discussed legally, which is we have ten council districts and we do not have a single Asian American representative of any of those districts in a city that is thirty-eight percent Asian American. I can tell you, a decade ago, when I was on the council, before the last lines, we had three Asian American representatives on the council. And I think there is a concern about dilution and reduction in District Seven. I would like to have an analysis of that. So open to any motions or whatever. I'm hoping that at least we can understand those numbers. Councilmember Sparza.
Hi, Mayor. I'm, I'm happy to include that analysis. I and we have that analysis for District, what, six, District Nine and Ten and Two as well? Is that correct?
That's right.
So I'm, I'm happy to include it. I, I, I'll say I wish the commission had forwarded one map. This isn't about politics. I won Dove Hill in twenty eighteen, so this is about community. It's about politics. That community has had significant changes within the Evergreen School District this past couple of years. So that's why it made sense to have Dove Hill in that area so that those residents could they're more, the families at the school are now in other parts of Evergreen now. And, and so we're looking at communities of interest. We are specifically tasked with looking at schools and how they work. And so if included in that analysis, we look at how Dove Hill and the dispersal of Dove Hill students when that school was closed into other schools into the Evergreen School District, those families are in with other parts of Evergreen. So it makes sense. Again, it's not about politics. I won Dove Hill. It's about what's doing right for the community. And, and what I'll say is, is District Seven in the other maps, the, the Latino population was higher in some of the other maps. Yet I went with this map. And so, so things have been moved all over, but what this map does is it maintains a higher number of Asian voters and Asian influence on this district. We are not diluting that. It is still a higher voting population as it was in twenty eighteen. It is still an Asian influence population as it was in twenty eighteen. So I'm happy to include that analysis.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, I appreciate that, Councilmember Sparza. And again, I, I think it's just important for us to put the data out there. As in all these cases, there may be very good arguments around communities of interest and other jurisdictions.
And I wanted to add one more thing because this has come up in this redistricting process. I know folks are sensitive when we talk about race, but we have to talk about race. That's what equity is about. That's specifically a part of this redistricting process. And, and, and to say that there are, are, you know, no Asians now, well, there have been times when Latinos have been underrepresented on this council. It happens. The voters elect who they elect. D eight has been a majority Asian seat. And, and ultimately, it's the voters who have a say. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Okay. Other council members want to be heard on this motion?
Yes, thank you so much, and I, I'm going to support the motion on the floor. And I will add, you know, I, I feel, I feel a need to respond to a couple of comments that you made, Mayor, with all due respect. When we talk about that, there is no representation of one ethnic group or the other. We did have, in my time that I've been here over the last six years, I'm sorry, seven years, we've had three different Asian representatives. One was in D four, and to speak that there is no Asian representative, I imagine that you're speaking directly to our council colleagues for having, having unseated those Asian representatives, which is Councilmember Cohen. He unseated Councilmember Lon and Councilmember Sparza, who unseated Councilmember Tam Nguyen. So there, there is those Asian seats, and, and they were occupied by, by Asian representatives. And, and Councilmember Lon unseated Councilmember Min. And so, so I think those are unfair assessments that have been made, and it, it stirs up, I think, a lot of divisiveness along racial lines here in the city of San Jose, when we should be truly looking to unite and strengthen our voices and, and actually look to see where we can continue to strengthen the voices of those that are most marginalized. And I hope that as we're looking at this map, we're hoping to do that, especially for those individuals who have been most impacted by the economics and the devastation of the last twenty-four months. Lastly, what has not sat well with me from the very beginning is that as the second largest population, the Latino population, I've not ever heard one person speak up. Neither a council member, my mayor, or the audience come and say, why is there only one Latino seat in the city of San Jose? I've heard a lot of comments and a lot of protests and a lot of disgruntled commentaries regarding the suppression, potentially the suppression of Asian voices. I've never once heard anyone being disgruntled regarding the suppression of a Latino voice. I've heard the analysis that there's Latino influence, but I've not seen in any of the maps, other than for District Five, a, a strong Latino seat that could potentially represent brown people. That is a huge concern to me, and it's a huge concern that that's not part of the analysis that's being put forth. We don't complain. No one says anything. It seems to be okay that we're following the status quo with four or five even potentially Caucasian seats, and that seems to be A-OK with everybody. There's no analysis on that. So I, I don't know if we can do a further analysis, if we're going to look at the Asian dilution of the, of the voice and also look to see whether we're diluting the Latino voice.
Thank you, Councilwoman Carrasco. Let me just go back to a conversation I had with Nora Freeman, which I asked our city attorney, are there any concerns around Voting Rights Act or other legal requirements as we look at redistricting, given the demographic changes we've seen in our city? Nora, could you just tell us what you told me?
Sure, Mayor. Thank you. And, and it is correct that there are potentially reasons in every district for the results of district voting. But we know from a review of the various council districts and the demographics that there are at least some facial concerns about potential Voting Rights Act issues and potential representation issues and the representation by Asian Americans certainly is one that jumps out, and we know we have a a community that abuts San Jose that has had some of those issues. So it's something that we're aware of. And, and just want to make sure that there that the decisions that are made on redistricting are done in a way that are fair to everyone and limit the potential for litigation. We've advised the council previously, I think I said this yesterday, that while race and ethnicity cannot be a predominant factor in redistricting over other traditional criteria, the council is permitted to take steps to create majority-minority districts when necessary to comply with the Voting Rights Act. So we intend to review all of these changes and just ensure that the city and the council are in the best position. If there is a challenge, we're not, we haven't received a challenge. I think everybody's acting in good faith as they're going through this process, but we will provide more legal advice should that be necessary.
Thank you, Nora. I just wanted to make sure, again, we're being fully transparent. I don't believe anyone's acted in bad faith. But we do have to be concerned about these legal issues that were expressed to me a week ago because of the significant change in demographics of our city. We are much more Asian American than we have been. We're now thirty-eight percent. It's the largest plurality of any racial group. We have no Asian Americans on the redistricting commission. We have no Asian Americans on our council. And we've had three changes now, which raised concerns, and I just want to make sure we are closely scrutinizing this because regardless of what we do, I can assure you, others will be closely scrutinizing it. And I'd much rather have something that we can all move forward with together rather than be stuck in, in litigation. Councilmember Arenas.
Sorry, I couldn't get to my, my mute button. Thank you. I'm, I'm glad you're bringing this issue up. I'm also happy to, to, to support this analysis, although I do question the, the timing of it. When these changes were happening for D two, D nine, D ten, there wasn't any objection in the moment or even as these changes accumulated. D six alone would create a consternation for me from the get-go. Although there were other things that I was discussing, but I wa, I needed to wait for the moment to actually bring this issue up. But as we were moving through the process, this, this seems to be an afterthought rather than something that, that was guiding this decision to make this announcement about the dispersment of Dove Hill. I've had two closures on the Evergreen School District schools that has created a flurry of dispersment of families to different schools. And as you all know, stability for children is so important, and that's part of the consideration that I gave when in, in accepting a portion of this, of this District Seven into District Eight. My district is, is predominantly Asian, at least sixty percent. I think that's the number. If I'm off, please don't quote me, but I'll just be safe to say the majority is. And and there's a difference between, there's a nuance between the different Asian communities in our district. And I just want to make note that it, the, the communities that are coming into District Eight would probably be more Republican, would probably vote more conservative. And yet, because I know that this is the right thing to do for this particular community that believes that's always in my district, to accept it as part of, of District Eight, they already identify themselves as such. And, and sometimes that's, that's really important and important enough. So, so anyways, I'm not going to delay the vote anymore, but I do think that there's that, that we should have the professor who came in last week review some of the decisions that we've gone over today to see if there really is any legal issues. And I respect our district attorney, to the nth degree, have a high respect for her. Yet every lawyer has their own different domain and area that they're experts in. And I would like to have somebody who is an expert who can tell us if there is any cause of concern for some of the changes that were being made, not only to D seven, D eight, and D five, but also to D two, D nine, and D ten. So I look forward to seeing what that looks like. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yeah, I would just emphasize if we're going to get legal advice on this, it really should come from attorneys. The experts can certainly opine in various ways, but it should be the attorneys that advise us. So, so hopefully we'll, we'll get that clear counsel from our, our attorneys and any attorney, legal, outside legal help they might want to solicit.
Mayor?
I just want.
May I address just the, the concerns? May I address just the, the concerns that are being expressed? We will be reviewing this with our expert, and, and we'll be reviewing all of these changes and the impacts on all of the districts. So I want to make sure everyone understands that. And if there are legal concerns, we will certainly share those with the council, but we will be looking at everything, because there's been a lot of movement. So I, I just want to be clear on that.
And just to go to this issue around timing, reason why I raised it now is, first of all, we now have a draft map to consider. So it's time for us to look at these very carefully, these issues. And I raised this particular one in this district, because unlike the other four districts you identified, Councilmember Arenas, none of them touch on the specific issue I raised, which was the very specific legal vulnerability that I was made aware of a week or two ago, which is that we have a very fast-growing population that is not being represented in our council right now, nor on our redistrict commission. And so, so that's why I'm raising it. And that's why I'm raising it in the context of that district. And I think we've been informed by our experts that their particular, particular attention goes to those districts, which are majority or in heavily, what I think they call districts of influence, if I'm not mistaken, meaning a very high plurality of members of a protected class of particular racial group. And that's, that's why I'm raising it there. And I think that's why our, the lawyers will raise it as well. So that's why I want us to pay attention. Okay, Councilmember Sparza?
Thank you. And because this is my district, I'd like to add a few things and clarify some things. So District Seven has always had a majority Latino population, but a majority Asian voter population. It has always been that way. And, and the fact is, and, and this map maintains that. And the fact is, from Madison, Win, going all the way back to Iola, Williams, councilmembers have had to have coalitions to get elected in District Seven. They've built coalitions. And, and that's what community is about. And, and so this map does not change the historical racial makeup of District Seven. It maintains the Latino population, which has always been there. It maintains the higher, higher Asian population in District Seven, which is what it was in 2010. So again, this isn't about politics. And I, I actually am offended by the fact, by the consistent comments, looking at us, that, that there are no Asians on the council. I would love to have Asians on the council. I think that's a good thing to have the city well-represented. But the fact is, when Latinos were underrepresented, I didn't hear those comments about Latinos being underrepresented on the council for years. The fact that we have five now, which has been brought up consistently through this process, this hasn't happened ever. I'm trying to think. I don't think it's happened ever. And instead of taking it something that we should be proud of in our city, it's, it's being brought up as something derogatory. So this map does not change the history of District Seven. And as I said, one of the things that we are tasked with looking at in the redistricting process is schools. And in Evergreen School District, there have been a lot of changes. And I, I would also say this publicly, is there, there might be other changes in the future within that school district. And so the families in that school district are getting moved around. And again, this is not about politics. I won in Dove Hill in 2018. This is about what's doing right for the, for the community. It's about what's doing best by the families in that area, who are now having to move farther out of their neighborhood into the other parts of Evergreen. And, and having that makes sense. But again, the map that is there tonight does not change the population trend or the voting population trend for District Seven. And I'll stop there. Thank you. I'm ready to vote.
That's a very reasonable conclusion. We'll have the data and we'll be able to analyze it. Let me emphatically reject the notion there's something derogatory in anything I said. I am concerned about complying with the Voting Rights Act. This is specific to the issue that was raised to me. And that's why, and, and I believe Nora has just indicated it is a concern for all of us.
She indicated that she's looking at all of the council districts.
Okay, Nora, did you raise a specific concern to me that there could be a vulnerability if we're not addressing the significant demographic growth of Asian Americans in our community?
Is that citywide?
It's citywide, it's been an issue raised with, with the entire council, but I do not want to get into our legal advice to the council and any potential litigation risks. Thank you.
Okay. But the concern was raised for the entire council, is that right?
Yes.
I'm sorry, could you?
There was a discussion about the impacts of the change in population and what that means in redistricting with, with the entire council, yes.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Arenas, your hand's still up. Okay. I, I think we have a motion. Let's vote.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Perez?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Sparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Ricardo?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay. I don't think we have anything more unless anyone has remaining issue. All right, let's, we need public comment. We had it last night. We had public comment last night. All right, let's adjourn the meeting and we'll resume again on Tuesday on this particular issue. Thank you.